Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting of the Norfisahari Regional Sewer District Board of Trustees to order for February 17, 2022. As the Secretary, please call the row.
Mayor Ali, here. President Brown.
Here.
Mr. Sula.
Here.
Mayor DeGea, present. Mayor Bachi.
Present.
Ms. Dumas.
Here.
Mr. Joyce.
Thank you. Now I ask for the approval of the minutes from our February 3, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
I'll take the motion by Mayor Bachi, second by Ms. Dumas. Question? No question. The minutes will stand approved as they are printed. Let's go to Madam CEO. This is actually in different order. Okay, let's, let's, no, no, I'm okay. I'll go with this. So it says, "Public session. Have we been advised if anyone who wishes to speak, anyone that signed up to speak on any specific agenda topic?"
They have not, Mr. President.
And we'll go to your report, please.
Thank you, President Brown. Members of the board, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Beginning with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, we have one active case among district employees. This brings us to 206 confirmed positive cases since the beginning of the pandemic, with 205 folks recovered and returned to work. We have one employee with COVID-like symptoms awaiting their test results, and no employees remaining at home because a member of their household has tested positive. On Friday, January 28, folks from Alkazan, the Allegheny County Sewer Authority, serving Pittsburgh and surrounding communities, visited the Westerly and Shoreline Storage Tunnel construction sites. So Alkazan has commenced design of their Ohio River Tunnel, which is one of three CSO tunnels that they will build under their Clean Water Plan, and they wanted to see how mining and shaft sites were used during construction. Also, as part of their visit to the Westerly Storage Tunnel site, they saw the large diversion structure being constructed that will convey flow from Walworth Run outfall to the Westerly Tunnel. So thanks to Doug Gabriel, our Deputy Director of Engineering and Construction, for leading the site visits, along with Buck de Pue, Construction Supervisor, and Eric Zarabilia, Construction Tech, at the Westerly Tunnel site, and then Ryan Sullivan, Construction Supervisor, at the Shoreline Tunnel, Storage Tunnel site. So Alkazan is interested in future discussions with the district on lessons learned during construction and operation of our CSO tunnel as they just begin their design process. So I think this is a great testament to Devana Marshall and all of the folks in E and C that folks are coming to learn of our good work and see how we run these sites. And the fact that folks from Pittsburgh are coming is even an additional benefit. So congratulations to the team for that. And that's my report, President Brown.
Thank you. Any questions for the CEO? There are none, then we'll go right to our action items. Let's start with authorization to issue requests for proposals. This is a request for authorization to issue an RFP in accordance with Hary revised Code, Chapter 6119, for crane operator qualification safety training.
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Bachi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sula. Is there a question? There's no question without objection. It's approved.
Resolution 61-22.
Thank you. Let's go next to authorization to advertise this, this request for authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Hary revised Code, Section 6119.10, for one-year requirement contract for rooftop fall prevention equipment with an anticipated expenditure of $200,000.
Move to adopt 62-22.
Motion by Ms. Dumas.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sula. Is there a question? There's no question without objection. It's approved.
Resolution 62-22.
Thank you. Let's go, authorization to enter into agreement. Let's start with a request for authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Wade Trim, Inc., for stormwater model data management supporting services on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed $2 million. Also, request for authorization entered to professional services agreement with the Cleveland Clinic Foundation for the executive health program for 2022 calendar year, an amount not to exceed $60,000. And then finally, request for authorization entered to professional services agreement for testing and construction inspection services on an as-needed basis for the term 2022 through 2026 with TerraCon Consultants, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $3,500,000. With Resource International, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $3,500,000. With Professional Service Industries, in an amount not to exceed $2,500,000. With ECS Midwest LLC, in an amount not to exceed $2,500,000. And with CTL Engineering, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $2 million for a combined total amount not to exceed $14 million for all agreements.
Move for adoption of resolutions 63 through 65-22.
Motion by Mayor Ali.
Second.
Second by Mayor Bachi. Questions? If, if you could, on 63-22, award for Wade and Trim Stormwater Model Data Management. This is an ongoing program. If you have a place, just curious why with such a magnitude of such a significant program, we only got one proposal.
Okay, I'll walk through it. First, this is what the project's about. During the master plan, we had four distinct master planning studies that were undertaken. We developed models in each of the colored areas. And what this contract is about is continuing to upkeep these models and utilize these models as things change. So during each master plan, we had four major engineering consultants leading the project with their appropriate subs. And each of them handled modeling in each respective master plan. We put this on the street, had a pre-proposal meeting, which was very well attended, so there was interest. What we came away with, Wade Trim led one of the master planning studies. Stantec is one of their key subconsultants that will have a piece of the pie in the modeling activities. They also led a different master planning area. They determined business decision to team. The other ones did not, you know, chose not to propose.
All right. And then on 65-22, four different awards for, in, it looks like three tiers in terms of amounts. I'm presuming that these are going to be based on specific competencies of each of the firms and will be done on a task order basis. So we got four years of programming here, and it looks like it's going to oversee the next $1.2 billion in construction as we move forward. So just looking at some insight as to how we'll continue to monitor the work as it goes forward and how you, how do we make a determination as to who gets what types of work? Because again, it's just, in general, it's a task order for testing and/or construction inspection.
Good afternoon, President Brown, members of the board. Well, everything you said is very accurate, President Brown. So yes, so this is a support services type contract for our construction staff out in the field to help with overseeing inspection during construction, as well as some onsite testing as that construction goes forward. And so, yeah, we're looking at a five, hopefully a five-year period that we'll be able to use these contracts, sorry. Over that period in construction, we have about $1.2 billion planned. So again, the overall contract amount was based on that. So between these five contracts that we're awarding, it's $14 million. We did select five consultants from the nine that proposed, and that selection was based on our needs over those five years and the type of projects that we know we're going to put forward. Looking at the proposed firms' qualifications and capacities, we then made a decision on how we would break that up. We have a lot of experience actually with all of these firms. Four of them hold existing contracts with us. Those ones are wrapping up currently. And so based on that, we have two firms that we're awarding, three, or requesting to award $3.5 million amounts to. These are not-to-exceed contracts, to your point. They're not guaranteed. We then have two that will be awarded $2.5 million contracts. And then the last one is a $2 million contract request for award. And as you pointed out, yes, they are based, they're like, we, not-to-exceed contracts, and then there are assignments based through task orders. So we look at the upcoming project, what the needs are from inspection services or testing standpoint. We look at the abilities of the staff that these different firms have, and then we make our selection based on that. The inspection services are usually project by project, so we have one or two inspectors from a certain company on a project. And then within that, we also may have different, different, some of the different contractors may be doing some of the testing, but usually it's by project-by-project basics where we bring on these different firms to support us.
Okay, thank you. That does answer my question. No questions? Any other question or concern? If not, then without objection, they're approved.
Resolution 63 through 65-22.
Thank you. Let's go to authorization to enter into contract, starting with request for authorization to enter into a construction contract with North Star Contracting, Inc., for project creek bank stabilization project in an amount not to exceed $389,360. Also, request for authorization entered into a three-year contract with Converge One, Inc., for AVEA software and phone system maintenance, in an amount not to exceed $218,629.8.
Move to adopt 66 and 67-22.
Motion by Mr. Sula. Second. I'll take Mayor Ali as a second. Question? Question? Then without objection, they're approved.
Resolution 66 and 67-22.
Thank you. All right, let's go to authorization of contract modification. This is authorizing final adjustment change order of contract number 17002285 with McNally, QWIT, DVT, JV for Dome Valley Storage Tunnel project by decreasing the contract amount by $5,776,044.43, thereby bringing the total contract amount to $136,543,955.57.
Move to adopt 68-22.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dumas, second by Mayor Bachi. Question? So just for the sake of the discussion, I'm assuming that there was some specific allowances and general allowances as well that probably weren't performed as part of this project, and that is where the savings is coming from?
Yes, President Brown, members of the board. Of the 5.7 or so that's being returned, 4.6 million is coming from the unused general allowance, and about another million is coming from the unused specific allowances. So yes, the majority of the monies that are being returned are in those unused areas.
Okay, and this facility went online when?
I don't know the exact date, but it did go on towards the end of last year, which was required under our consent decree. So it's been in full operation since probably in December of 2021. I don't remember the exact date. Oh, was it July? Sorry, July.
Okay. All right, and so just in a nutshell, the just overall, general impact of this facility going online?
Yes, so the Dome Valley Tunnel, the Dome Valley Tunnel system, which include, the big portion of that is the tunnel itself. In total, will control 363 million gallons of annual CSO from the Dome Brook area.
So whether we got high or low flow, particularly in high and low flow, we don't have to worry about the discharge of sewage, I should say, being injected or spilling over into the creek at this point. A lot of it's being captured now because we've taken a lot of those sewers and connected them directly to the tunnel so they don't go through the creek anymore.
Right, so during wet weather, I mean, we obviously are pulling a lot of the combined sewer overflow that used to go out to the creek. Out of that, obviously, there's other stormwater inputs that Frank and his team will be looking at as they advance the stormwater program. But yes, a piece of that pie is now being pulled off and stored in the tunnel.
Okay, that's good. Maybe related, but not, but does this affect at all warm weather, summer months in terms of the amount of odor, et cetera, that might become an outlet area as well?
I think we're going to find out this summer. I, you know, I, obviously, 350 million gallons is a big chunk, and some of that big chunk comes in, you know, big events. So we'll see. There are a number of other issues along Dome Brook. There are sanitary sewer overflows in certain communities. They're being dealt with, illicit discharges from time to time. And, you know, in low, low, low flows, you get a lot of stagnation. So we'll, there's a lot of venting where that, you know, you get the odors by the culvert. We'll, we'll see.
Okay. I'll take a "we'll see" for now. All right. No other questions? Without objection, approved.
Resolution 68-22.
All right, that's my favorite part, property-related transactions. All right, let's start with authorization to acquire one temporary easement for an additional six months at property known as permanent parcel number 00427009 and 00427011, located at 2111 Scranton Road in the city of Cleveland, owned by 2151 Scranton Acquisition LLC, necessary for construction of Westerly Storage Tunnel project, and authorizing a holdover payment for the same with total consideration of $90,000. Request for authorization to acquire three permanent sewer easements and one temporary easement at the property known as permanent parcel number 10401022A, located at 1150 East 49th Street in the city of Cleveland, owned by the city of Cleveland, necessary for construction and maintenance of sewer line consolidation sewer project, total consideration $48,734. Request for authorization to acquire two permanent sewer easements and one temporary easement at property known as permanent parcel number 104020101042016, 10402017, located at 4901 South Marginal Road in the city of Cleveland, owned by the city of Cleveland, necessary for the construction and maintenance of the Shoreline Consolidation Sewer Project, total consideration of $55,900. Request for authorization to acquire three permanent sewer easements, one temporary easement at property known as permanent parcel number 10401001, located at 1159 East 40th Street in the city of Cleveland, owned by the city of Cleveland, necessary for construction and maintenance of Shoreline Consolidation Sewer Project, with total consideration of $45,800. Request for authorization to acquire one permanent stormwater easement, two temporary easements at property known as permanent parcel number 58107049, located at 2728 Oakview Circle in the city of Broadview Heights, owned by William T. Eden III, Richard G. Eden Jr., and Sharon K. Eden, necessary for construction and maintenance of Chippewa Creek Flood Reduction Project near Echo Lane, total consideration $18,950. Request for authorization to acquire one permanent stormwater easement, one temporary easement at the property known as permanent parcel number 7711003, located at 4750 Richire Drive in the Village of North Randall, owned by LeBron and Peggy Bell, necessary for construction and maintenance of Bear Creek COVID Improvements Project, with total consideration $9,500. Request for authorization to acquire one temporary easement at property known as permanent parcel number 77112063, located at 4905 North Randall Drive in the Village of North Randall, owned by Arthur Timmons, necessary for construction of Bear Creek COVID Improvements Project, with total consideration of $300. And then finally, request for authorization to acquire one permanent stormwater easement, one temporary easement at the property known as permanent parcel number 55120059, located at 6100 Lombardo Center South in the city of Seven Hills, owned by Omni SLF Seven Hills LLC, necessary for construction and maintenance of West Creek Debris Rack Maintenance Project in southern Seven Hills, with a total consideration of $1.
Move to adopt 69 through 76-22.
Motion by Mr. Sula.
Second.
Second by Mayor Bachi. Is there a question? If there are no questions, without objection, they are approved.
Resolution 69 through 76-22.
Thank you. All right. Let's go, authorization to grant credit. This is authorizing the district to issue a credit adjustment of total amount of $64,453.80 against sewer charges on the NERS, the account ending in 5685. the NERSD account ending in fifty-six eighty-five for Margaret Cassidy at eighty-nine sixty-three Brexville Road, Brexville.
Move for adoption of resolution seventy-seven twenty-two.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Elias. Second by Mayor Bachi. Question? Just if you could, I see the credit on here for us, and then there was an explanation as to what happened. Do we know if there was also a reduction or a credit given by the water department for this account?
It's, good afternoon, President Brown, members of the board. This was a leak associated with this customer's outlet on their water meter. Water did provide a similar credit of about thirty-six thousand dollars to the water account.
All right, thank you. Other questions concerned? If there are none, without objection, it's approved.
Resolution seventy-seven dash twenty-two.
Actually, I got a little something to say about this one.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, a little something to say.
Okay.
Number seventy-eight twenty-two.
Okay. Let's go authorization of appointment. Two of those, huh? All right, let's start with a request to appointing William Chorba to the Board of Trustees Audit Committee, joining continuing members Ron Sulek and Kenneth Coachella for a two-year term beginning February one, twenty twenty-two through January thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Also, a resolution appointing Mayor Jack Bachi to the Board of Trustees Finance Committee, joining continuing members Darnell Brown and Mayor Samuel J. Ali.
Move to adopt seventy-eight and seventy-nine twenty-two.
Motion by Mr. Sulek.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dumas. Question or comment?
A comment on seventy-eight twenty-two. John Watts go from the district, Ken Concilia, our independent committee member, and I conducted interviews over the past two months to fill the vacancy on the Audit Committee. We selected William Chorba as the best candidate to fill the two-year term on the Audit Committee beginning February first, two thousand twenty-two through January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Bill is the Vice President of Finance for CBIZ, Inc. in Independence, Ohio, a Cleveland-based company with over five thousand employees and a former CFO of Cleveland Metro Parks. He has a background in public accounting, risk management, and finance in both the public and private sectors, and is familiar with the Sur District mission through his work with the Metro Parks. So that's why we highly recommend him.
I thank you, Mr. Committee Chair, for those comments. Anybody else? All right, there are no other comments, and without objection, they are approved.
Resolution seventy-eight and seventy-nine dash twenty-two.
All right, thank you. I appreciate my colleagues stepping up to fill that vacant position on the Finance Committee. Thank you.
I was just thanking him, too.
Is he highly recommended as well?
Highly recommended.
Extremely. Extremely recommended.
Constance, I'm not going to say anything.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Let's see, let's move to, oh, one. Resolution of acknowledgment. This is a resolution of acknowledgment presented to Terrence P. Joyce in recognition of his years of outstanding service to the district board and noteworthy contributions to the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. That was motion by myself and Ms. Dumas, second. Is there a question? I would, I'd just like to make a couple of other comments because I'm sure Mr. Joyce would have loved to have been here, but he had a business conflict, so he is not here. But he did write us a brief letter, which I'd like to read for the record, if you don't mind. It's addressed to Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. It says, "To my NERSD family, I'd like to express sincere appreciation to the entire team for the honor it was to sit on the board of this great district for the past few years. I was immediately impressed by the love of dedication and devotion shown by everyone in the building across all departments. While our names are too many to mention, know that I have and will continue to sing your praises across the community. It sad to me that a previous work commitment out of town keeps me from you today. I wish my success to nothing but the best, and will always keep and extend a hand out to her and the district if there's anything I can do to assist sincerely, Terrence P. Joyce, Business Manager."
Very nice.
So, all right, thank, thank him for that letter, and the resolution certainly does aptly address a number of his contributions to the district. Did you want to make a comment, Ms. Dumas?
No, President Brown, just that we, we will pass that resolution request, or resolution to Mr. Joyce, and we appreciate that.
Okay, I appreciate that very much, and I would be remiss if I did not introduce Ms. Marjorie Chambers, who will be sworn in to the Board of Trustees for the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District Board of Trustees at our next meeting. So, welcome to our meeting today. Glad to have you. Thanks, welcome aboard. All right, thank you. Let's go back to, let's go about action items, let's go information items. So we have program management status report update, the investor advisor performance report for a twelve-month period ending twenty, in the December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. That, that certainly, if you have questions or comments, you can see my friend here, Mr. Dubois, and then we'll have the twenty twenty-one year-end review and twenty twenty-two budget preview. All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, President Brown, members of the board.
Good afternoon.
This is year-end update on the capital improvement program for twenty twenty-one. It is a month late, but hopefully you'll indulge me. So with it being the year-end update, I will provide an update on contract management. I will also provide an update on our KPIs at the program level for the year-end twenty twenty-one, and if I can see through my glasses, I will also provide an update on Project Clean Lake. So looking first at contract management, we ended twenty twenty-one with ninety-one active contracts. The value amount of those contracts is just over one point one billion dollars. Looking at it first by phase, the majority of it is in construction contracts at seven hundred and sixty-four million. We then have three hundred and twenty million in design-level contracts, and then the remaining thirty million are in planning-level contracts. By location, the focus is on collection systems with eight hundred and thirteen million. We then have one hundred and seventy-five million in plant-specific projects, and the remaining one hundred and twenty-six million in the category of district-wide. So looking specifically at year-end actuals for twenty twenty-one, we did award four professional services contracts. The total value of those four contracts came in at twenty-nine point five million. Of note there was the design of the southerly tunnel for nineteen point nine million, and then we also had the design of the southerly second-stage duration improvements for five point five million, and the southerly enhanced series treatment improvements for three point two million. We then also awarded ten construction contracts. The total value of those contracts is two hundred and fifty-three point two million. Of note there was the shoreline tunnel for two hundred and one point six million dollars. We also had the Pearl Jennings Road storage tank and pump station upgrades for twenty-one point seven million, the southerly building demolition project for seventeen point two million, and the district-wide HVAC equipment upgrades for seven point one million. We also completed and closed out twelve construction contracts. The total final value of those contracts came in at seventy-seven point six one million. This includes the completion of the London Road Relief Sewer Project for thirty-five point two million, the southerly electrical infrastructure improvements for seventeen point six million, the Eastly-Westly Low Voltage Equipment Replacement for ten point three million, and then the Wesley TLC replacement for four point three million. Moving on to our key performance indicator, this table here lists our twelve KPIs. The two far-right columns show, our first there is our goal set for each of those KPIs, and the furthest-right column there shows what our actual was. For those items shown in green is where we met or exceeded our KPI. As you can see, and as I'm happy to report, that we met or exceeded all of our KPIs at the program level in twenty twenty-one. This includes our KPI around cash flow. Cash flow KPI is set at eighty-five percent of plan. We closed the year at ninety-three percent of plan, which equates to one hundred and sixty-six million dollars in that, in that cash flow. Also of note is our consent decree KPI. We met all of our KPIs as it relates to consent decree compliance, reporting, and performance milestones. There were eight of those that we had to hit in twenty twenty-one, and we did hit all of those. And then also of note is our KPI around value engineering. We set a KPI for eight million in twenty twenty-one, and we achieved thirteen point six million in VE savings. Two other KPIs I'll go in a little bit more detail on is our KPI on the Business Opportunity Program, and then I'll also provide a report out on work orders by change categories as a percent of construction. So looking first at our KPI on the Business Opportunity Program goal, again, this goal was set around any construction contract that closes in a given year. As I mentioned previously, we closed twelve contracts in twenty twenty-one. That final amount came in at seventy-seven point six one million, and of that, twenty-seven point oh three million was paid out to BOP firms for their efforts on those projects. This equates to BOP participation of thirty-four point eight two percent, and that did exceed the cumulative goal that was set on those twelve projects, which was just over fifteen percent. I'm looking at the BOP cash flow in twenty twenty-one. No KPI on this, but just information that I wanted to share with you, with you today. So our planned cash flow for POP in twenty twenty-one was thirty point one million. What we actually paid out to BOP firms for their work was thirty-nine point three million. Again, that thirty-nine point three million is part of that one hundred and sixty-six million overall. So looking at our work orders by change categories as a percent of construction, the total work orders on those twelve projects came in at three point eight two percent. This equates to two point nine seven million of the seventy-seven point six one million. As you can see from that graphic there, the majority, and over fifty percent, fell to the category of owner-requested changes. So moving on to the update on Project Clean Lake, under Project Clean Lake, we have a hundred planned projects. Of those a hundred planned projects, sixty, sixty-seven of them are either completed or active. Those a hundred projects have been defined to meet the requirements specifically called out in, in the consent decree, specifically twenty-five control measures, and of those twenty-five control measures, we have achieved full operation on eleven of those. In regards to dollars spent or awarded to date, we are tracking at one point seven eight billion. In two thousand and nine dollars, this equates to one point four four billion for purposes of comparing it back to our estimate when we entered into the decree, which was three billion dollars when we're all said and done. In regards to cost savings through VE, through value engineering savings, we're tracking at just over five hundred million, again, in two thousand and nine dollars. Looking at our performance to date as it relates to environmental benefit, since entering into the consent decree, we have controlled one point seven billion gallons of CSO with three hundred million gallons reduction planned by the end of twenty twenty-three. So we're about ten and a half years into our twenty-five-year degree, decree, decree? I think it's a good time maybe to rebase line ourselves, and actually, this is in response to a question you had, President Brown, in regards to, you know, what we thought we were going to get when we entered into the decree versus where we think we are now. So I'm happy to report that we are realizing a higher level of control. The two main reasons for that is we were conservative in our planning, which is always a good thing, but in addition to that, you know, we continue to look for opportunities through design and construction to optimize performance as it relates to CSO control and level of the service, of course, cost-effectively as well. So I mean, those are really a good thing, and what it looks like in regards to our rebase line. So when we entered into the consent decree in, you know, twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, our estimated performance when we were all said and done was to be four hundred and ninety-four million gallons of remaining overflow in a typical year. So our current estimate, you know, that now that we've completed some of these projects or advanced some of these projects even just through design, our current estimate when it's all said and done is that there will only be two hundred and fifty-two million gallons of remaining overflow in a typical year. I will also highlight the fact that we continue to look for opportunities to provide a level of service beyond the typical year, and we've, we've done this in many cases, and specifically in our ability to completely eliminate fourteen of those CSO points. So not only are those locations controlled in a typical year, they no longer exist. So no matter the rainfall event, there will be no combined sewer overflow going out at that point. So some twenty twenty-one highlights, we talked a little bit about this already during the action items portion of the, of the meeting, but we did complete Control Measure Eight in July. Dome Valley, with the Dome Valley Tunnel System coming online, and with that three hundred and sixty-three million gallons of annual CSO control, I did want to talk a little bit more about this and highlight it. Again, with the final adjusting change order that was approved by the board today, the final cost of this contract came in at a hundred and thirty-six point five million. As you are well aware, this project was in the heart of University Circle. It included over nineteen thousand linear feet of tunnel. This includes an eight, eighteen-foot diameter mainline tunnel, as well as two consolidation tunnels with a diameter of eight and a half feet. It also included five near-surface structures, including four large gate structures. And then this is another, I guess, interesting thing about this system is it's our only inline storage tunnel in regards to the seven tunnels that we're constructing under the consent decree. It's the only one that is an inline storage tunnel, which means it has flow both during dry weather and wet weather. The other systems are offline storage tank, or storage tunnels that only see flow during wet weather. And then I also wanted just to highlight some three other things as it relates to this project, again, in the heart of University Circle. So obviously, a lot of coordination with the community and stakeholders in this area. I mean, this was a joint effort, not only through the planning, design, and construction phase with engineering, construction staff, but also Constance and her team in supporting those efforts and the substantial amount of coordination that had to occur. As you may recall, we also had some significant construction hurdles on this project, specifically two large flooding events at our main mining site at Ambler Park, which obviously impacted our project from a schedule standpoint and, and other ways as well. That first flooding event at Ambler Park was pretty significant. We were actually in the process of mining one of the consolidation tunnels, and that was completely flooded out. But even with all that, we were able to deliver this project ahead of the critical milestone in the consent decree to achieve full operation, and, and that's also in part to our efforts working closely with operations and maintenance, because completion of construction is, is not achievement of full operation. Obviously, these facilities then have to be handed over to O and M for them to help us start them up and then be able to operate them until, and at that point is when we can report to the EPA that we achieved full operation of this control measure. So obviously, engineering, construction, working closely with our contractor on this project, as well as our design consultant, but most importantly, our O and M staff, Kevin Zabrowski, and his team successfully start this up and turn it over to them for successful operation. Some other highlights from twenty twenty-one include we commenced the construction of the shoreline storage tunnel. That has an estimated three hundred million gallons of annual, annual CSO control associated with that. We also commenced the design of the southerly storage tunnel, an estimated seven hundred and fifty million gallons of annual CSO control. And then last but not least, we also had a successful modification of the consent decree resulting in an estimated ninety million dollars of savings for our ratepayers as it relates to some construction costs that we will no longer have to take on. In an association with that, the level of benefit to the environment was, was not impacted in a negative way, and in some cases, we were achieving an increased benefit to the environment. And then just quickly, a look ahead at twenty twenty-two. We will commence the design of the Kingsbury Run Consolidation Sewer. This is part of the southerly tunnel system. We will also commence construction of the shoreline consolidation sewer, which is part of the shoreline tunnel system. We will commence construction of the Westley Chemically Enhanced High Rate Treatment and Disinfection Facility right within the small footprint of the Westley Plant. And with that, two hundred and sixty million gallons of annual CSO control. And then finally, but not lastly, we will complete the construction of the Westley Tunnel. Tunnel, 285 million gallons of control. So with that, I'll take any questions?
Not a question, but a comment, just a lot of progress, a lot of good work done, a lot of environmental benefits to the community. So and done pretty much almost quietly in the in the community. You know, you mentioned Dome Brook, we had a few bumps in the road, but you know, that's what happens. And as long as the phenomenon of water rolls downhill continues, we'll have those types of problems, have those big storm events in in construction sites. Maybe related or not, the how do we look at as an example, because every every community does an annual community compliance report? And they're supposed to do things that help eliminate some of the identified problems in their community, et cetera. And we also have like MCI, we're supposed capital improvement plan or program that provides dollars to help them do some of these things. Do we how how often do we kind of look at the intersection of their community compliance and their ability to use the funds that we provided to them to to get alignment with some of these longstanding problems that they've had in their community? That are their responsibility, not ours.
Okay, so for a long time, since the early 80s, we've had the Community Discharge Permit Program in place, Titles Three and Four, the Code of Regulations outline requirements. As part of that Community Discharge Permit Program, communities are required to submit annually
Right.
Checklists about progress expenditures. We're tracking both capital and operating expenses over the years. Issues, we deal with them on illicit discharge. So we get those reports annually. We get them from the vast majority of the communities. The dollars on the local level over time are pretty significant when you add them up. The issues of infrastructure across the area when we completed the local SSCSs are also very significant. So we're going to continue to utilize, you know, their reporting mechanisms. But I think you will see some proposed modifications to Titles Three and Four and a slightly restructured Community Discharge Permit Program as well, and we'll outline all of that stuff to you this year. Where we want to get much more involved with the communities on using SSCS results, using our MCIP. And as we've reported before, we're really active in trying to get as much federal infrastructure dollars here to start tackling these problems. I think there is some momentum. I like it. I really do think we've seen some good stuff over the years. The MCI program in and of itself has been great. You know, there we're 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 providing significant funds to solve local problems. They are matching us in a fairly significant way. So, you know, we're talking 100-plus million of investments in the recent past. So we're going to continue to do that and get much more active with the communities to help them solve their problems using the information we've we've developed for them.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pay attention, Jack. This is your
Good afternoon, President Brown, members of the board.
Good afternoon.
I'm here this afternoon to present to you a overview of our 2021 financial results. In summary, I think overall, we had another strong financial year. Looking back to the atmosphere at the time when we set this budget versus now, you know, it was totally different mindset in a lot of ways and as we moved through the year. And it's really been that case the last two years that where we were at year end versus where we the unknowns at the beginning of the year had been very interesting, to say the least. But overall, I think we've done our best to to manage the work of the district and the finances finances as responsibly as possible. And I will walk through what those results look like. So as I mentioned, I'm going to talk about 2021 results, sewer and stormwater. I'll also give a very brief preview of our proposed 2022 budget. So as always, there's some guiding principles that we we look at as we're setting our budget and managing the finances, the parameters of the rate study itself, operating within that year's budget, meeting our debt service coverages, reserves, and other financial ratios that are driven by our bond rating, other factors. So I'll start, and in some ways, this presentation will do two things. It'll look back both over 2021, but also back over the last five years. 2021 was the last year of our 2017 through 2021 rate study. So I want to bring some pieces of the culmination of that five years together in relation to performance versus that rate study, numbers that were defined in 2016, and sort of how we've moved through the the process of managing the finances over that time and specifically debt management that I'll get into later on in the presentation. Overall, all the variances from the rate study amounts from five years ago are favorable. From an operating revenue perspective, as you could see, we're about $30 million above the projection at this point. That's driven primarily by better-than-expected consumption in most years over the last five years. 2020, the pandemic impacted year, we saw a 5% decline in consumption. The other four years, we were either at or better than budget, including this year. So I'll go into more detail on this year coming up. Operating expenses is a culmination of savings in O and M primarily, but in all areas to control costs related to salary, utility, usage, many other factors. It's been a driving force of Kyle and the staff overall to do everything we can to control those costs over the five years. And then finally, debt service, again, lower than the debts, the rate study projection, combination of project management by ENC, better-than-expected bids on projects, and management of the debt and loan borrowings through finance. So now looking specifically at 2021 versus the budget. On this slide, the finance, the budget for sewer revenue was 344.9 million for 2021. That was set last spring based on a repeat of COVID impacts that we saw in 2020. At the Finance Committee, we presented a series of potential budget outcomes related to revenue. The green bar, the 360.1 million, was our estimated budget if we saw a normal return to a completely normal year in 2021, so our usual 2% consumption decline. We saw better-than-that consumption was down 0.8% this year. So therefore, our actual number of 374.9 million is above even that for this year. Looking at how that revenue breaks down, this is very typical year-to-year. Almost 100%, 99.5% of our revenue comes from our user charges, another very small part. Other income includes about $700,000 in septic fees. And we are, as always, are billing relying on our billing agents, the largest being Cleveland Water. They collect, they bill and collect almost 92% of our revenue. Looking at operating expenses, again, we were about $17.8 million under budget for operating expenses in sewer, driven primarily by two largest factors being salaries of $4.4 million under budget. We traditionally have open positions, vacancies due to employees on leave that leave money on the table there. We, like many other entities this year, have also seen higher turnover than in the past. So we've had more open positions than we've seen in a while. That's contributed to that. That has then impacted the benefits as well. About $4.9 million under budget in benefits, 4.2 million of which is lower-than-expected healthcare claims. Utilities, we were under budget by about $2.1 million, driven primarily by $1.3 million reduction in electricity expense due to lower-than-expected consumption. These breakdowns are typical of our operating expenses. On the pie on the left is by area of the district operations at 56.5, 56.6 million is always the largest piece of our operating expense puzzle. The breakdown on the right is by expense category. Salaries and wages together make salaries, wages and benefits make up about 58% of our operating expenses, or 72.7 million, which is consistent with prior years. Other items of note in the operating expenses include healthcare expenses, $10.6 million that are in the human resources area, utilities of $11.4 million, primarily in O and M, and professional services of $6.6 million. And then contractual services, the collection fees are in the finance department. Those are the billing fees that our billing agents charge us, about $9.4 million. So this is a whole historical look at the sewer operating expenses going back to 2015. As you can see, since really 2018, the budgets and actuals have either declined or been flat over that entire time period. As I mentioned, that is a focus of this, both Kyle and myself, and Frank and Jim and his teams. We do what we can to deliver the services needed with controlling costs any way we can, efficiencies in salaries, better use of utility management, electricity consumption, and those sorts of activities to control that cost. And that that holding steady of those operating expenses were one of the major factors that allowed us to deliver a lower-than-expected rate increase in the last rate study. So moving on to capital expenditures. Capital expenditures were about 18.5% under the budgeted number. This budget includes both Davana's CIP controlled by the engineering department as well as a few other pieces, including minor capital purchases, vehicles and the like, as well as labor charged to the capital projects. The biggest the biggest factors making up the difference here were the Sutherley Sutherley Second Stage Project.
Sutherley Second Stage Settling Improvements.
That project was about not had about $9 million in lower expected cash than expected cash flow. In addition, there were many, there was some projects came in with bids better than expected, and there was the left various general and specific allowances on certain projects that weren't spent, like Davana mentioned, on the Dome Valley Tunnel. So the breakdown of the 172.1 million that we spent on capital for the year, as is typical, the majority of that $91 million is the CSO consent decree projects. And as has been the case over the last five-year period, those are primarily funded by WPCLF loans. The vast majority of the capital project and the capital plan is funded through WPCLF loans at this point. The largest tunnel or the largest projects in terms of spend for 2021 included the Shoreline Storage Tunnel, about 42.6 million, Westerly Storage Tunnel at 16.1, Morgana Run Relief Sewer at 12.2 million, all loan-funded consent decree projects. Similarly, looking back in time at the capital plan, as Davana mentioned, we're well into our consent decree at this point. One of the last 2009 is still sort of lingering in this chart as some of the pre-consent decree times. But as you can see, while this year, at 172 million, is the lowest since, that's still well over double what we were delivering before the consent decree. And we still do have a significant capital improvement plan ahead of us. So the final piece on sewer that I wanted to touch on is debt service. We're very close to budget on that. We're usually very close. There's some minor differences depending on the exact date of when projects close out and we begin paying the loans back. But generally, we're good on that debt service. The other factor would be 2021 bond refinancing had an impact on our debt service for this year as well. So I walked through some of this information last year, but I wanted to put 2021 in the equation because, as I mentioned, it's the last year of the rate study, 2017 to 2020 rate study. And one of our key points of that rate study was to maximize our use of OWDA loans versus bonds for our capital funding. And I put together a series of slides to talk about the use of those loans, other debt management, and what we've done to control those costs, factors that contributed into our 4.2% rate increase for the next rate study. So in 2021, we financed six six projects, about $37 million worth of projects. All of these projects came in with interest rates below 1%. That's below our 2016 planning rate of 3.2% and even our year-to-year planning rate of about 1% that we that we were using for this year. So looking back to 2017, this was the the lowest year in terms of new loans. But the the savings for this year of potential future debt service, based on an analysis of a potential bond issue in lieu of the loans that we that we did take out, showed just under $4 million of net present value savings associated with the debt service of those loans. So over time, over the whole five-year period, we estimate that we saved about $105 million in debt service by using loans to fund our capital program as opposed to new bonds over that time. Similarly, we're always working with our financial advisors, looking at the market and opportunities for savings for refundings associated with the bonds that we do have outstanding. We have about $1 billion in bonds still outstanding and $800 million in loans. So we're nearing $2 billion in total debt outstanding. The 2021 advanced refunding was a $114 million transaction that refunded some of our 2014 bonds that resulted in just under $10 million in savings. Additionally, we did a defeasance in December. We retired about $27 million of our 2014 bonds outstanding. That transaction netted $18 million in savings. Over the five-year period, our debt management has saved our customers about 111.5 million in debt service. And this slide basically just combines all those pieces together. Over time, we did 39 transactions, new loans, bond refinancings. In total, about $1.5 billion in principal. And the the total savings of all that activity combined is $223.2 million to our customers. And that's one of the driving factors for our lower debt service this year and in the next five years of the current rate study. So with that, I'll wrap up the operating for 2021 on sewer, just a quick summary of where we stand in terms of our debt service coverages. Our total revenue, as I mentioned, 374.9. Less operating expenses leaves us $259 million available for debt service. And we are more than meeting all of our coverage goals on both total and senior debt service. The senior debt service coverage will continue to get stronger over time as we don't issue more bonds. The the one that we get tighter over time is the total debt service as we still have some some loans planned in the future, but we project to meet all of our targets of two times and 1.5 times service coverage. So with that, I'll move into Stormwater and look at their operating results for the year. Operating revenue for Stormwater was slightly above budget, in line with our projections. Operating expenses was $12.4 million under budget. The main areas there were about $2 million in professional services and $10.3 million in contractual services, and the $7.3 million of those totals are attributable to project delays. So specifically, there were multiple projects. The Chippewa Creek at Route 21 was delayed to a Dominion Gas Line relocation. That was a $1.5 million of project cost that was pushed out. Baldwin Creek at Abbey Road had easement delays. That was a $900,000 project. And there's several other examples where the, the cash flow of the operating expenses were impacted by outside factors. Watersheds and finance continue to look at this, look at ways to optimize the, the way, the way we spend those project costs. And we will probably talk about this more at the budget presentation as well, in terms of our plan going forward for project delivery in the Stormwater area. Looking at the Stormwater revenue, very similar situation to, to sewer, primarily billed by the City of Cleveland, 98.2% of the revenue is billed by them. Historical look at Stormwater, budget versus actual expenses. You can see, you know, we've, we've had, we've seen this before. Stormwater is very subject to some outside factors, still a newer program that's finding its way, and continue to look for ways to refine the project delivery. But the 2020 was obviously impacted by pandemic slowdowns. We purposely delayed some projects last year. Outside factors impact 2021. The breakdown of Stormwater's operating expenses, the vast majority of the expenses, $14.3 million, in the watershed department as the delivery of the Stormwater projects and as well as the Stormwater master plans. Contractual services and professional services are where those costs live in the budget on the pie on the right. So with that, I'll start to bring some of this together. This slide is a, a look at, a historical look at a total receipts and disbursements district-wide in our cash balance. Obviously, we had higher-than-expected revenues and lower-than-expected expenses, so we have a net surplus for the year and a higher cash balance than we had at 123120. Here are our current 1231 reserve balances. The operating reserve is the 90-day reserve we're maintain, we're required to maintain per our trust agreements with the bondholders. Capital account is the account where we pay our capital projects out of, our debt service out of that account as well. The rate stabilization account is used to offset revenue shortfalls for debt service coverage purposes. We've never had to use that account. We don't anticipate adding any more to that account this year. The Stormwater account has $23.4 million. That's the district's Stormwater funds. The community cost share account has $31.5 million, and those are the funds for communities to use for project reimbursement. A brief look.
Can you, can you clarify just one small thing for me, just so I know?
Yes.
On the page that speaks to receipts, disbursements, and balances?
Yes.
And it has a legend on the bottom that shows the cash receipts, disbursements, and balances. The blue, the blue legend is that final column? If, if we wanted to determine what the cash balances were, we'd look at that blue index on the final?
Yes, the, the blue line represents the cash balance with the total balance right now. This is total sewer and Stormwater funds of just under, or over $500 million.
Okay, thank you.
And this slide represents the breakdown of that total. I'll quickly talk about our investment portfolio, our, this breakdown of investments. We have about $458.6 million infested. Portion of that, $266 million, we keep at Star Ohio. That's primarily parts of the capital account that I mentioned we use for capital payments as well as debt service. The rest is managed by our third-party investment advisor. President Brown, you mentioned that report is in the packet. I will note that for the second straight year, we've seen a lower rate of return. Our portfolio rate of return for 2021 was about 0.2% blended. We're starting to see some increase in rates, so we think that will go up over this year. But conversely, those low rates have directly attributed to our low borrowing costs as well, so there's an offset to that. And then finally, a Stormwater or wastewater ratio analysis. So these are some of the major ratios that we track associated with our bond rating and other factors. As I mentioned, all of them are favorable to the targets and strong in comparison to last year. As I mentioned, we're meeting our debt service coverage targets. We currently have about $5,683 of debt principal outstanding per customer account, which is similar to last year. And then the, the last to note, the days of operating cash on hand has gone up from last year to about $1,475. Again, that's a function of the surplus with higher-than-expected revenues and lower expenses. We're continually monitoring ways, the best ways to utilize the cash that we have, exploring options with our long-term financial plan that we've developed with our financial advisors that include opportunities for future bond defeasements and other factors.
Just quickly, Ken, can you talk about the 400-day target versus the 20 number and the 21 number?
Yes.
And how you're going to, because I know you have a plan for managing.
Yeah, the 400-day target is the, the minimum we, we would ever want to be at, and that's associated with an entity of our, of our bond rating, AA1 and AA+. We would, I prefer to stay above that to some level. We've been around 750 is the lowest we've been in the last five to seven years, and that's what we're going to work towards over the next five years. Part of the financing plan that we put forth in this rate study is going to move a bit away from loans. We're only going to use loans on our largest projects going forward and use more available cash for, for debt, for debt financing. So that number will probably stay steady this year and maybe into next, but as those loan-funded projects roll off and these new cash-funded projects roll on, we should expect to see in '23, '24 that those numbers will come down.
Thank you.
So that's my last slide on 2021, before I do a brief preview of the proposed 2022 budget. Is there any other questions that I can answer for the board?
So far, so good. I mean, these, these are fairly consistent with, I mean, the strategy we started with from, from the onset, I mean, particularly the, the use of the low-interest loans with an eye on looking at the fact that in the latter years, we'd be starting to do more capital from cash, et cetera. So this aligns with that strategy. Let's continue.
Okay. Thank you, President Brown. So as I mentioned very briefly, this is our, these are our current proposed 2022 budget numbers. For sewer, we're looking at operating revenues of about $385.3 million. That's factoring in a 2% consumption decline and a 4.2% rate increase for 2022. Operating expenses, just under $1 million is our proposed budget above 2021. Capital expenditures, it's going to be another big year in the capital plan, projected total of CIP and other capital items of just over $260 million. And then debt service for 2021, we're expecting just under $120 million for this year. The Stormwater budget, similarly, we're projecting for a, the 4.2% rate increase in 2022, a, a higher proposed budget of operating expenses of $35.7 million, as well as $7.5 million in capital expenditures for land acquisitions and capital projects in the Stormwater area. So to summarize all that, obviously, when we set the budget as we move through the year, as I mentioned, the tone and the atmosphere has changed dramatically, but we've always maintained a very conservative stance. We did all of this with no outside assistance of any kind. All these funds are our customers, district funds. We received no federal financing of any kind, so that was all factors that we considered as we moved through the year. We met all our benchmarks for 2021. Our budgets proposed for 2022 are supported by our new rate study and begin the implementation of the plans in that study. We're, we're proposing sewer budget increase of about 0.7% for 2022 and Stormwater increase of about 5.6%. And for this year and looking forward, we expect to meet all of our financial ratios and metrics. So the next steps, we'll present the detailed budget to the Finance Committee on March 8th with anticipated board approval of the budget at the March 17th regular meeting. That's the end of my report.
Thank you for the presentation. It's kind of helpful to kind of look back and see again how we align with what their thinking was. It's interesting, particularly in, in this pandemic environment, kind of understanding all of the challenges that we had to go through with, not, not just the instability of collections, et cetera, but the, the moratoriums and things and how, you know, we had, we, we expressed our, our interest in doing all those things to help our customers, but at the same time, really kind of keeping an eye on what the overall impact was going to be on us. So I'm kind of just a little surprised that it came out kind of as well as it did. But we have, we have, you know, we have a lot of things in front of us on that note. You know, I would continue to emphasize for this group, and as we get to, to the budget process, the, the whole discussion around affordability is a critical discussion for me and the community. And so the ability, as I said, I know some of the things we're looking at is, is not just the fact that we have the programs in place, but who is eligible and where do they, where do they, how do we reach them, connect them and get them tied into the programs, the sales, and then kind of looking at, you know, some of the best-in-class. I think we, we looked at San Antonio, somebody who was supposed to be pretty good at this. Their rate was 50-something, 54% or something like that in terms of people eligible versus people that actually sign in. So we got a little ways to go to get to that level.
That's right.
So I, I think the ability for us to do what we need to do on the compliance side, do what we need to do to be in compliance with the consent decree, but doing it in a way that is, you know, cognizant of who our rate payers are and the fact that, you know, we are, we're in this 25-year consent decree because of the whole affordability discussion to begin with. So we need to balance those two issues as we continue to move forward.
And some support.
Well, 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 they were here today, so. So no, we're, we're talking about getting, getting beyond the conversation point on support at the federal level and really getting some, some help to, to ease some of what will be the impacts on rate payers, still even keeping in mind that the further we get into project delivery on the capital program, those projects that we spend a lot, we're spending a lot of dollars on them, the return on those investments will be a lot less significant than they were on the ones we did early on. So the ability to have that important discussion as to the, the feasibility and wisdom around doing some of those projects in lieu of maybe other strategies that might be more helpful to those communities is still a conversation we need to continue.
That's right. Thank you, President Brown.
All right. Thank you. All right. Where did that put me? Okay. So let's go to open session. Anything for the good of the order? Madam CEO, has anyone signed up to speak during the public session portion of our agenda on any subject?
They have not, Mr. President.
All right. We do not have any matters for executive session today?
No, sir, Mr. President.
Okay. Then that does complete our agenda for the day. I would now entertain then a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Bachi to adjourn, second by Ms. Dumas. Without objection, we adjourn. Thank you.